Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to bring the February 16th, 2020 meeting of the Interboro Bonus School Directors to order. Ms. Caldwell, can we have a roll call please?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mr. Willis?
Here.
Mr. Frillinger?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Ms. Joseph?
Here.
Ms. Faden?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chabon?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Mr. Evans, can we have any questions in the mic, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro school district. The great that this board and the deliberations this evening is here to witness truth and knowledge. What is undertaken will be done in charity and peace, and hopefully soon might be for the benefit of others. All this, in your name, amen. Blessed be the life of the United States of America, and through the republic which stands one nation under God, in the resolve, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, first up, we'll have our student representative of course, Ms. Sacks Claire.
From the kindergarten academy, the children have been finishing off many recessments in both reading and math, and we have PPIAS for university students who are being taught what it looks like to be respectful, responsible, healthy, and safe in school. The pre-K and kindergarten academy students celebrate the 100th year of school by dressing like they're 100 years old. Teachers planned various activities for the students that were related to the number 100. The students also enjoyed various round-type day celebrations in their classrooms. At Glen Olden, our school was fully composed of players cheering on their team on January 14th. Unfortunately, we are too suffering the loss, but our school was still proud of the players. Our PPIAS team costumes wear down our January 20th mismatch day. Students enjoyed wearing a variety of various patterns and mixing their own flavors. This was great especially because January 12th welcomed the footballers. Our students also enjoyed snowboarding this past month. They loved coming to school the next Saturday at home from one holiday to another when we barely had lunch. We closed out the month of January on our anniversary of the month of New Year's. The students chose the suit to represent our school. This coming month, students are focused upon the virtue of care. The students are looking forward to their PPIAS breakfast celebration launch, and also learning a new interesting fact about Black History Month each morning during March. For Norwood, the PPIAS community sold a few T-shirts on their Black History Month. The students instead really enjoyed receiving them. Student council is selling T-shirts, "Believe in Yourself." The students instead are excited to receive the T-shirts. We recognize our January students of the month with certificates and bracelets. Norwood School is celebrating Black History Month during February. Our students are working on several different art projects for Black History Month. We are having clues read each day about a famous person, and at the end of the month, we are sharing the name. Instead, the elementary students are discussing African-American scientists, inventors, and mathematicians. Our first grade students are working on a Jackie Robinson read-aloud and working on informative reading activity, as well as a variety of people who make contributions to our country during EOL. Our second grade students will enjoy a read-aloud and complete a leadership booklet about how Ruby Bridges made such an enormous impact at such a young age. Afterwards, students will brainstorm how they can contribute into leadership within their community. Our third grade during social studies is learning about African-American history, as well as vocabulary, stories, biographies, and more. Our fourth grade social studies classes are learning about famous African-American scientists and inventors. Our fifth grade students are working on reading and sharing informative essays about several famous African-American people. Our sixth grade EOL students are reading Watson's The Birmingham, 1963 for Black History Month. Our sixth grade social studies students are learning about the life and contributions made to our country by African-Americans. Our seventh grade EOL classes are learning about distinguished Black authors, civil rights authors, and are reading about Amanda Lormont's The Hill We Quone. Our eighth grade EOL students are focusing on Reconstruction, the Great Depression, and the Harlem Renaissance. They will also begin to read to Kellie Mochenberg at the end of the month. Our eighth grade social studies students are taking a virtual tour of the many different accomplishments of African-American artists, writers, inventors, authors, and more. Specifically, Jackie Robinson and Rosa Parks' life accomplishments and how they impact our communities today. In D.E., they are doing a project based around the impacts, successes, and contributions of African-Americans and athletics. At Prospect Park in January, students and their parents were invited to our Title One reading night. The virtual event includes presentations from our reading specialist team, including interactive skill building games and food pizza. Our middle school students were rewarded for their positive, productive, and proud behavior throughout the second marking period as they enjoyed a fun ballroom at the Blue Cross River in Winnipeg. Students enjoyed ice skating as lights snowflowed around them. Throughout the season, our students recognized our socked-in line with the King Junior Day, and our fourth grade students read My Brother Martin and researched Dr. King and the change he helped bring around the world. The Tinacum School participated in their first annual winter stock drive to benefit the Joy of Socks Foundation during the month of January. The foundation supports individuals and families experiencing homelessness. Socks have been described as almost more important than food in this situation, but less likely to be donated. In total, our school collected almost 2,500 pairs of new socks for homeless. Four hundred rooms are in classroom ice cream parties for collecting the most socks. They are Mrs. Wilson, Mrs. Cassidy, Ms. Judman, and Ms. Heron. Thanks to everyone who supported this drive. On January 14th, the Tinacum School was a sea of green thanks to our Eagles dress house beer kick. Tinacum students instead wore Eagles attire and just green to show support for our hometown team. Unfortunately, it was not enough as the Eagles lost their playoff game. That allows next year. On January 18th, Mr. Jimmy Simkins was officially sworn in as the new superintendent of the Tinacum Township Police Department. Besides the police department being an important part of the Tinacum School community, Mr. Simkins raised his family in Tinacum and is charter manager of Interboro School District. Congratulations, Mr. Simkins. Mr. Simkins is our police chief, Edison, who has also spent many years with the Tinacum Police Department and always supports Tinacum School. Enjoy your retirement, Chief Edison. At the high school for North Forest, Interboro hosted the PMPA District Hall and Forest Festival at Union Valley School. Organized by choir director Miss Canals, the festival had 160 select students from 30 local schools from the Chester, Delaware, and Philadelphia counties. They came together for a day of singing on February 4th. Senior did a little audition and made it into the choir. For the school camp food drive on NAHP Day, we collected over 700 pounds of food and delivered it to Loews and Fisher's. For the high key meet, the boys' high key team dominated at the final match. Congratulations to Ms. Dan and Mr. Benkit, and to the team members. Matt Adnanzu, Barbie Cresswell, McKenna Galvow, Michelle Leany, Kenan Lu, Sarah Manten, Nick McBride, Ken Lee, Kelly Ng, Karate Patel, Nate Shipley, and Adam Reich. Musical tryouts and the Herschel's began this month, stay tuned for us by noon.
And that concludes our report.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, next up, recognition. We don't have any tonight. Sorry. It's my thing now. Okay, number four, do we want to public comments, Mr. Evans?
Public comments. Members of the community are respectfully reminded that with regard to public comments, neither the board nor solicitor will engage in the dialogue with person or person addressed in the board. The board will listen and take all time-had questions and suggestions under advisement. Where specific answers are requested, community members are invited to telephone, email, or use the postal service to communicate their questions to the superintendent or the president, who will respond or have appropriated school district personnel respond. First up, we have Amy Ferris.
My name is Amy Ferris, at 1122 Pennsylvania Avenue, Prospect Park. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, the time has come for you to vote tonight on updated public safety plan in motion 20 to make masks optional. We know that's not exactly what it says, and we will continue to argue to change some of the arrangements that allows for this panel to bring masks back to our schools. Know that we are paying attention to the fine print. You have been elected to this position to make a decision for the children of this community. This decision across the country has been made out of fear and opinion rather than data, changing science, and facts for far too long, and it is time to end it. The FDA now reports that PCR testing has been testing positive for COVID and flu, not just COVID, so therefore the numbers are a lie. There is no way to tell how many people truly, factually, have had COVID. What is not a lie is the survival rate of 99.99% of children under the age of 14. In fact, the only death rate of 8.5% is for organ diseases that year. On January 18th, the CDC said that cloth masks do not work. On Tuesday, February 8th, CHOP endorsed masks optional in school districts with declining COVID numbers, which we are. Dr. David Ruben and CHOP said in an interview, "The risk of children's mental health and continued learning loss is now far greater than the virus itself." According to the Federal Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, emergency department visits for suspected suicide attempts and adolescence jumped 31% in 2020 and 51% in 2021. In October 2021, the Academy, I'm sorry, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, and the Children's Hospital Association declared that pandemic-related decline in child and adolescent mental health has become a national emergency. Our children are suffering. These maladies are causing more harm than good to their physical health, their mental health, and their education. And don't think that they were not aware and felt some sort of way after watching over 70,000 people at the Super Bowl not masked. They would have used in England. If those people are not masked, why do I have to wear one to school? We are teaching them complacency for government and uneven individuals, to do as they say and not as they do, and that is not how this country is supposed to work. You, the board members, must do the right thing tonight and hope yes to update the health and safety plan to make masks optional. I know what is best for my children. These parents here tonight know what is best for them, children. And a bite mind of power or parental rights have been tipped to be not enough. Our children have met in the crossfires of this political game, and it ends tonight. It is time to stop messing with our kids. Parents in this community, I know it'd be easy to make this your one and only school board meeting, so 10, but I urge you, regardless of tonight's outcome, to continue to come to these school board meetings, being informed and being involved. It is not enough to go on social media for future rates. We must continue to show up and hold our school board accountable to their needs. We have a CTR team that's not allowed to obviously crumble. We must continue to show up, ask questions, and hold accountability. To quote Michael J. Fox, the American president, it is not only permissible to question our leaders, it's irresponsible. Thank you.
Next is today's girl.
Good evening, everyone. Staff, board members. So, my name is Naydunell. I live in Prospect Park. I've gone, I don't know if it's listening here. I've literally grown up in Interboro School District. I've been unfortunately to a couple of the schools. So, I'm really just here to speak about an experience that I experienced in Interboro High School the other day while waking up my son, and how hypocritical I felt walking out of those doors with my child. I got a call from the school nurse that my son was sick, so I had to come up and pick him up from the high school. No problem. I know. Don't walk from high school first thing. Soon you should get out. Dropping on the doors, it seats right across every single door. Mask required to enter. Crack, start feeling around. I forgot a mask. I don't have one. So, I kindly and respectfully pull my shirt above my face. The moment I walked through your doors, one of your staff, now we all know it's a quarter just like any, you were in a room, literally, with two sets of doors and a glass divider from somebody making sure you come in or out of that building. There wasn't a single other person around me. As I looked through your glass partition, she's sitting there with no mask on her face. So, my first thing is, oh, if she's not wearing one, I'm not going to wear mine. Not even thinking of the fact that my son is inside this school, probably wearing a mask for better part of this day already. So, I completely told her why I was there to pick up my son. It wasn't until the woman on the other side of the glass partition that was more than six feet away from me had the audacity to shoo me away from her desk and tell me that I needed to then wave at my car till my child came down because I had a mask on my face. The absolute hypocrisy that I had to feel in that moment from a woman staring at me through a glass partition to be doing the same exact thing that I'm doing is absolutely uncalled for. The fact that I have to know that I dropped my child, the children I have born at Prospect, at the high school, and one at the Prospect Park Elementary, and that they are forced to wear masks by the same exact people who are telling them to do so when they're not doing the thing as follows either. My children since September have suffered bacterial nodules growing on their throat from being repeatedly in the same exact mask all day. Both of my children have both suffered upper respiratory infections since September for repeated mask wearing all day long. Both of my kids are now suffering. One has allergies, and his allergies are to a whole other level because of mask wearing all day long. Now, their very pro-vaccination, pro-mask doctor has stated to me on multiple occasions that I had to bring my children to and from doctor's appointments that prolonged mask wearing is not good for anybody, especially kids that are running around, walking back and forth. They're literally being forced to wear these all day long. I don't know how much more, as a mother, that I can stand here and say to you, "It's not safe. It's not healthy. It's already been brought to attention on multiple occasions." That's why science will tell us why they're not healthy. I would just like to ask the board, is there anything here implementing where the teachers are telling these students to change their mask app throughout the day? Nothing implementing that. My child walks out of doors because he has sensory processing disorder, where he's got a masked, soaked face because he sucked on the bag, and now soothes himself because of sensory processing disorders. This is one of the main reasons why he's getting upper respiratory infections. Not one teacher ever once told my son throughout the day, "Hey buddy, why don't you change your mask?" I asked them both repeatedly all the time. I've also asked my high school board, "How often do you see teachers within the classrooms not wearing masks?" He says it's more so when there's no other students, but at the end of the day, if my children are forced to make wear one during eight hours a day in school, then so should the teachers. That's just coming from my ninth grade student. That's really all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Next is Susan Connelly.
Hi, I'm Susan Connelly. I live at 316 North Sky. I'm in Glen Olden. I'm also the vice chairman for the play division in Glen Olden, so I care very much about my community. While I can appreciate the position that you are in to satisfy the concerns of so many parents, I feel that the decision will need to be made based on masks and not feelings. The state of emergency and requirement for adults and children to wear masks in public ended prior to the start of this school year. If we are going to use the risk of exposure as our determining factor for mask requirements, then we need to consider the positivity rating within the school district and not in the complete county. Interboro School District is responsible for exposure. It's not responsible for exposure outside of the school, because this percentage needs to be based on the number of students and staff in the district and the percent of positive cases within that population. Including positivity rates of the people in our county's many nursing homes and hospitals is not a valid indicator of risk. Those individuals are isolated and not exposed to our children, and our children are not exposed to them. I will not get into the statistics of the risk of deaths for children from COVID versus influenza, because we all know for a fact that influenza is of much bigger risk to our children. Some of the local school districts are changing to mask optional, and others have adopted the approach I suggested to determine the positivity rating. It is past time for Interboro to do the same. Throughout this pandemic, I have always been proud of the balance of the response within this community. We all showed mutual respect regardless of your received risk from COVID. No one was excluded or judged for wearing or not wearing a mask at the playground. We even allowed community activism in Glen Olden at the height of transmission in 2020. I ask you now to be part of that welcoming community and allow citizens, as they have always done in the past, to take responsibility for their own health and decide for themselves what is the acceptable risk and what is not. Interboro School District is responsible for the well-being of the children, and that includes our mental health. Our own adults are personally responsible for their own health, and that burden should never fall on the shoulders of our children. Thank you.
Next is Jamie Whitworth.
Good evening. I'm Jamie Whitworth, and I am a higher home in 212 Louisiana Avenue, Prospect Park, and I've lived there for 13 years. I have four kids in the district. I own this in the 9th grade, and others are in 6th, 4th, and 1st. My question to the board is, when does our children's mental health family to be more important than muzzled that keeps them from seeing the person and feeling comfortable enough to speak? The mask has been in my 9th grade. The 9th graders are in the office for hours during classes. He was yelling. They think he was being disrespectful and not compliant, but no one ever asked him why. He has such a hard time wearing it. See, the thing is, it triggers anxiety. When he was 10 years old, he witnessed something most kids don't, and really shouldn't have to. His grandmom lived with us during her final days. Those days were not fun as her lungs kept filling up with fluid, and she would say, "I'm suffering, and I can't breathe." So, needless to say, something covered his face, preventing him from breathing. Fresh air probably triggers these memories and creates high anxiety. So, I asked him, "When will our children's mental health be more important than the next fella, than where the next fella is coming from?" My other concern is with the next fella. It seems that they are qualified to show a COVID test back at the child centers, but cannot determine or maybe aren't allowed to determine the difference between measles and, or allergies, and COVID. I could come on a tone with conversations between the school and I, but there's one situation that needs to be heard. It happened December 20th when I received a 12:30 minute report from school admin that my first grader came to the nurse and had three symptoms, and they need to be tested. Kids aren't ready to test them, but that's besides. The symptoms were running low, sore throat, and cough. She don't fever. I'm saying, "So, he needs to be picked up," because he wasn't getting tested, and can return after break. I couldn't get, I couldn't get there right away, so I kept, so I said, "Keep him in your office and tell my girls to pick him up there, and I will get them there when I can." I go through school at 2:36. The miss picks him. I told her I was there to get my three kids, and my first grader was in the nurse. And for 10 minutes, my girls came out, but no one came. They started to go back to look for him, and the miss picks him, says, "Did I send him through the front door?" Send him through the front door by himself, a first grader. He got lost. He's finally found in a care pickup. A line I have never, ever, ever been in all year. So, the nurse sent my first grader through the door to a door he is not familiar with because he used the back of the school to enter and exit. Only to get lost, and then someone put him in a care pickup line. With other children, I thought he was in the nurse office for a half hour with COVID symptoms. What does not make any more sense is that when we got home, my 4th grader said she was at the reception desk, and was told she'd stayed three COVID symptoms. I never got a phone call, and she never had quarantine. I'm trying to make sense of all this. We have a board of non-medical professionals trying to make medical decisions for our children as if us parents do not know what is best for our children. I would appreciate believing in health and safety with who also wearing, and my children, up to me, and put more effort into making sure they are mentally correct.
Hello, it's Mike Dana, once again, 575 Chester Flight. Listen, I'm listening to everybody's story here, and I sympathize with everybody's story, and I know you guys are tired up here and, tired up here. But I'm playing lawyer a little bit on this side, not the solicitor. I'm playing the lawyer on this side. So, we did get a catch of the health and safety plan, and I've talked to a couple board members about it, and I'm gonna let you know, I'm just telling you, it did not happen with the bourbon's end of the, are we happy that you're gonna vote on dropping the mask? Absolutely. Do we trust that the masks aren't gonna go back? Absolutely not. Reason being, it's been two years. I mean, when, when the mask got dropped, it was found unconstitutional, and then Allison Bean decided, you know, we could have dropped it back then. I'm sorry, I like you to death, but solicitors don't make law. I mean, they interpret the law. They suggest the law, but they don't make law. It seems like this panel has gone through the solicitor as law. Now, like a couple people said, "I didn't sign up. I didn't vote for you something co-parenting the kids." I parent my kids. I have my kids best confused at heart. We need to find out from the board, we need a better definition of what, the job is keeping our kids safe. In my eyes, throwing a Band-Aid on a kid, cleaning up vomit, that's, that's the nursing job. You guys direct, direct whatever you gotta direct. But I know you guys agree with me, and I know, Mr. Phelps, I know you agree with me, and I just, I'm not gonna sit up here. I mean, I heard about you guys are suggesting to keep it on pre-K because of they can't get a vaccine. That's absolutely ludicrous. That is absolutely ridiculous. These kids, you cannot keep it on when you take kids. I mean, if you're gonna take it off K-12, take it off kindergarten. There is, I mean, I didn't want to hurt the facts up here because you guys don't want to hear me breathe again, but there's even the, you know, FDA's pulling their, they wanna pause on it because they can't get a test group, because the kids don't get it. If those kids don't get it, we come on. And with the bus situation, and again, Mr. Solicitor, I know you're gonna say something at term time. Please, correct me if I'm wrong, the bus is not public transportation. School buses, it's defined under law that school buses are not public transportation. So, we say we're following the CDC guidelines about, you know, it's a mandate that they got to be on buses. No, definitely. That's absolutely wrong. I had a lawyer confirm it today, and I've had multiple witnesses with that lawyer today. And I'm not gonna keep you long, but I do wanna end on this note. I was on the work session on Monday night. A board member, and I don't know who it was, called me out on if I was speaking for the, all the parents. How many parents here agree on what I've been saying for the last six months? I spoke to them. I heard what they had to say. They called me. Maybe guys should do. Maybe should have listened to what they had to say and actually do what they asked. That's all I'm doing. I'm up here speaking for some people that don't have the heart to come up here and speak, whatever reason, whatever reason it be. But I listened to what they had to say. Maybe guys should do. Thanks.
Is that it, Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all for your comments. We really appreciate it. Next up, Mr. Evans, your board.
Motion 5.1, five minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors. Come on January 19th, point point two be approved.
Second, motion has been moved in seconds. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, although there's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries on zero. Next up, we will hear from our solicitor, Mr. Pupiel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. President, Superintendent Riley, members of the board, members of the public. This evening's report for the solicitor's office, we have focused specifically This evening's report for the solicitor's office, we have focused specifically on the COVID issue this month as it relates to some of the language very clear, Mr. Dana. There is a way to get out of this and a way to end up as a defendant in federal court, like Springfield School District, like Perkyomen Valley. Perkyomen Valley got sued by four unidentified unnamed special needs parents who alleged that they were being discriminated against because they went mask mandated. Uh, they dropped the mask mandate without language. They went before a federal judge on a temporary restraining order. It was granted. They went before the same federal judge a week later, and it was granted. Perkyomen Valley, all of its school district, is now mandated to wear masks because of.
Did solicitor speak? You had your turn.
Wait, tell the whole story now.
You had your. We're not going back and forth here. Please let me finish.
Thank you.
And it's only temporary.
Mr. Dana.
Mr. Dana, you're incorrect.
No, I'm not.
You are wrong, sir. Sir, sir, I represent Springfield School District as special counsel hired by the insurance company to defend them.
And they're going to court.
We won. The case that went before us lost. Perkyomen Valley is the name of the case. They had a temporary restraining order. The judge granted it. The whole district is masked as a result of.
And how many parents within this school district have come to this school board and, and threatened to sue you based off of. Parents actually have been saying about these masks.
I'm trying to tell you the hurdles that exist. You don't understand it respectfully. This is a.
I don't understand how respectful.
Hold on a second. No. Man, it's a public comment. A public, you're right, I'm trying to.
All right. Listen, listen, this isn't a back and forth session. We're having our meeting. Please, we gave you the opportunity for your comments.
Parents later, we're done listening.
We gave you your opportunity for your comments. You know where we're going on tonight. You know the direction we're going. You know the direction that this board has been going through for the last two years. Now, I understand, now, I understand your stance on things, and I'm not saying I do not agree, but we're not the only people involved in this. The administrators, the teachers.
Yeah, because they understand the details, and they're afraid to speak up.
Listen.
They're afraid to speak up.
Every. I'm not gonna go back and forth with you, because that's not the kind of meeting that we're gonna have. If you don't wanna let me finish.
I watch these walk around.
Are you gonna let me finish, man? Now, you can think what you want, but I'm telling you, every decision this board makes, we make it with our children and this district in our hearts. Now, you may not think or agree with exactly what we're passing or doing. And sometimes, like I told you, Mike, you know, you know I agree with every word you say, but we have to work as a community. Like, uh.
But you're working off a smaller group of people based off a large group of people. You cannot think your name that.
As a district.
If that's the way they need them, you need to, you need to survey every single parent in this school district.
Listen, listen, I, I listen, let's, let's, we're late, we're late, I'm gonna tell you one thing. They don't go late. I told you guys this month that if we did, we're going forward to the federal court. That's it. Right there. That's the end of the meeting for Ms. Franklin. The language that's referenced has been based on my recommendation so that we don't get sued in court, so that we don't end up with a judge telling us what to do. Though judge in the one case did not buy the school district's argument when they went into court. This judge requires the district, they have thirty-five hundred kids, to mask. They're not gonna be able to get out of masks until that judge, until that judge lets them out. If you don't, Springfield got sued, they're in court. They could have the very same outcome. When they got sued, we put this exact language in their plan so that we could go into court and win to keep the masks off. We did. Last Thursday, another hearing is Friday the twenty-eighth, at which time that judge could look at Springfield School District and say, "You are incorrect. You have to mask." That are, these are the perils. What I say to you that I am not speaking down to you. I have seen and been at these meetings where everyone tells me what the law is. I respect that. We're going into court. When we go into court on these topics, we're, we have to pay attention to the law. Not what everybody wants, not what everybody thinks, not what I think. I agree with Mike Dana personally. He knows it. Okay? He knows it. We've had conversations. That doesn't carry the day in the law.
Our other kids have these stuff personally.
It doesn't carry the day in the law. The language that is. The Americans with disabilities, ma'am. I don't mean to argue, but I am telling you that if you want this district out of a mask mandate, then it needs to occur properly and the right way. That's the language that's recommended here this evening. That's what the board's going to vote on. There will be, masks will be the mandate, the order, mandate freedom goes away. It's over. The language that is suggested this evening is mine, along with the medical professionals, in an effort to be able to.
Dr. Calchi? Dr. Rata?
Dr. Wedner. Dr. Wedner, or, uh, Dr. Wedner, right here.
I want to.
He'll discuss, he'll discuss it.
A letter because of. So what's that saying that you?
All right. So it's a no mask, the mask is option. There's no mask mandate after this board votes this evening. The language that you have in place is there so that we can.
The twenty-second Tuesday, Tuesday, when it come back to school.
Tuesday, excuse me.
On Tuesday, there is no mask mandate. But please give us a chance.
Those are all, those are all the items you have, that we have to take, or exactly what you don't want will come.
And this isn't about parents, not other parents, so we don't want to.
It's not. We, we understand that completely.
And we, as other parents, the difference. We're just getting Tuesday.
That concludes our report. That's why the language is just the way it is, Mr. Phelps.
What's the difference between Tuesday?
All right, that's enough. Thank you.
Yeah.
Number seven, Mr. Evans.
Motion five point one, motion seven point one, in the Treasury Report from the month ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, be approved.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero.
Motion seven point.
Why down out there, please?
That fund disbursement, they have three ways, six hundred and sixty-four.
I know it is.
Five hundred and thirty-nine dollars, ninety cents, be approved.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. What's motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion seven point three, did the budget transfer for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three?
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Number eight, there's no correspondence, Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving on to number nine, committee reports. Nine point one, Mr. Shaboom, here to work on a finding.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The finance committee met on Monday, February seventh, twenty twenty-two. The following items were discussed. For the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three general fund budget, we were presented and discussed. A preliminary look at the budget through a deficit of eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars and a tax increase of two point six percent. The preliminary increases and increases of various budget line items were presented and discussed compared to the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. It should be noted that the, uh, the district's base index, which is the real estate tax increase that the state, um, allows us, or, uh, caps us at, is three point four percent. The adjusted index is four point six percent. Historically, the district has never gone, um, at, at the adjusted index. There will be ongoing department budget meetings in March and April, uh, in addition to budget meeting regarding the various state incentive grants as the budget process continues. Uh, as of the finance committee meeting, there were no solid numbers from Harrisburg concerning the governor's education budget. I know Mr. Willis is gonna present through the legislative, so I'll be prepared to go ahead and budget. The funding for the high school and the new administration building were discussed as well with our bond council. She updated our debt ser, or debt schedule using current interest rates. The net increase to the district's debt service budget regarding the funding for these projects would be approximately two hundred thousand dollars over the next few years. Um, and then finally, the preliminary financial statements, uh, were discussed and questions were asked. That is all that's called.
Thank you, Mr. Shaboom. Next up is our GBO, Mr. Goldsboro.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. On, uh, our GBO meeting, which was the same date as February seventh, as the finance meeting, immediately following the finance meeting, our, uh, GBO meeting. And during that meeting, uh, the, there were first readings of, uh, of new policies being put into the program. Uh, and those items are number point five on, uh, on tonight's agenda, uh, and they were presented by Ms. Lambert and Stryly. And also a revision of a policy that is item number point four on this evening's agenda. And that is the extent of the, uh, GBO meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsboro. Next up, nine point three, Mr. Willis, legislative update.
Yes, the legislative update, the meeting was held on June nine. Um, we can discuss mainly Governor Willis' budget proposal, one point five five billion, which is a twenty-four percent increase in basic education funding. Two hundred million and sixteen percent increase in special education. We have a charter form, charter school reform, three hundred and seventy-three million savings to the school district.
I'm sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Moving on to nine point four, Mr. Goldsboro, the committee problem.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Um, I was informed, uh, that, uh, from the chairman of the liaison committee, Mr. Mike Capazzoli, uh, that, uh, there is going to be a Delaware County Community College Board of Trustee vacancy. Uh, I was informed that I should be, uh, announcing that at our, at our meeting, uh, our public meeting. Uh, and, uh, that according to our sponsorship agreement, sponsoring school directors have the responsibility for selecting the college's board of trustees. Uh, under established procedure, the liaison committee, which I am part of, screens the candidates and forwards its recommendation to the sponsoring school district directors for approval by majority rule. Uh, so, uh, the plan is to compile and distribute candidate applications in March. Uh, and, uh, hopefully having a recommendation for our, for our school board to vote upon a candidate come April. Uh, so that is one of the, uh, that is one of the things from Delaware County Community College. Also, uh, we were informed by, uh, by Dr. Joy Gates Black, who is currently the president of Delaware County Community College, that she will be retiring, uh, at the end of the, uh, in June thirtieth, uh, uh, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, so she'll be on for a full year. Um, she does not, uh, she's not, not leave, uh, necessarily because she wants to, but she has other things that are going on in her life that she needs to move on. She has elderly parents, uh, as she stated there, that are going to be taking up a significant needs and, uh, and take precedence in her life right now. So, uh, they're, they will be looking for a new, uh, college president. Also, uh, the Delaware County Bar Association, uh, recently received, uh, some documents, uh, that, uh, have historical significance. Uh, and, uh, those documents, let me see if I can bring that up here. Uh, those documents, uh, were known as the slave dockets, dockets. Uh, and, uh, the Delaware County Bar Association, in conjunction with Delaware County Community College, are going to have a kickoff event in, uh, in having those, uh, those documents available, um, and for, uh, for a year-long residency at Delaware County Community College, where students, staff, and visitors to the college will be able to look at those documents and reflect on the value of what they mean for us at present also. Uh, so that kickoff event is actually being placed tomorrow, beginning February seventeenth. Uh, and I do believe it is a virtual kickoff event. And I do have, uh, I have an information memo for two March regarding that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsboro. Next up, nine point five, Delaware County Intermediating Committee, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The Delaware County Intermediating Committee, the board of the Department of Defense, met on February second, twenty twenty-two. Approved contract with the Garden Valley School District for the DCI to provide threat assessment consultation services. Approved contract with Chester School District for the DCI to provide professional development on science and reading and ten-hour daily open consultation support. Approved, I made my phone's law. Approved a contract with the School District of, have a third school district township, I'm sorry. Approved a contract with the C, School District of, that first township for the DCI to provide fifty hours of special education program consultation. And then, let's see, accept the resignation of Mrs. Amy Gold, Golden, woman represented for Rattler Township, effective February third, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two. Accept the resignation of Christopher Ryan, woman represented for Liddley School District, effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Approved two adult and ten students to attend Family Careers Community Leaders of Amerisouth State Leadership Conference, May twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, March. I'm sorry, it's March twenty-one to March twenty-third. The next school board director meeting will be March second, twenty twenty-two, at six point five PM. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Next up, nine point six, Capital Improvement Committee, Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir. The Capital Improvement Committee met on January twenty-fifth at six thirty PM. Committee members and attendees were Jack Evans, Justin Shaboom, Mr. Phelps, Mr. Willis, Mr. Harris, along with engineers from Dewey and our architects as well, um, to discuss both the high school project as well as the administration relocation to the old two-line church. Um, as far as, uh, work underway, we'll be voting tonight on the contract with our architect, um, KCBA, uh, for the high school project and as well as the, uh, church ad and project. The church ad and project, they're working, the design is pretty much finalized on the, uh, office configuration, working on some of the outside utilities as well as some of the inside finishes, and there's still a few hurdles to go through with the borough level. But level has been very cooperative, and, um, we don't expect any issues there. As far as the high school, the high school is a major project, uh, which is set to begin this, this spring, or, I'm sorry, spring of, uh, twenty. or I'm sorry, spring of twenty twenty-three. It's, it'll be going into the design phase after we vote on the contract tonight. And then eventually, the superintendent will meet with her administrative team, then teachers and students, as well as community members and stakeholders, to provide input into the project. That's where we're at right now. As I said, we expect instruction to begin in the spring of twenty twenty-three and go through the twenty-sixth. That concludes my, oh, I'm sorry. The next meeting will be February twenty-second at six thirty P M.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. At this time, our student reps can be excused if they would agree. Page fifteen, page number ten, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mr. Melvin, are you ready? So before I start the PowerPoint presentation, I do want to let parents know that all the information that's being shared tonight will be available on the website for parents tomorrow. That includes the PowerPoint presentation, the Health and Safety Plan. Tomorrow, you will receive a communication through Blackboard. And in it, there will be an explanation of the changes to the Health and Safety Plan along with a summary that shows exactly the information that has been revised, what is remaining, what has been removed, so you can clearly see how the plan is changing from last month to what the board is approving tonight. Okay? I am more than happy to stay after the meeting and answer any questions that parents have. Dr. Webner will be here. He is happy to stay and answer questions as well. I do want to thank the parents that have reached out to me through phone, through email, asking questions, wanting to have a conversation and talk about this. I appreciate all of your feedback. And I do believe that everything you have been saying here over the past couple of months, the board is listening and has been listening to that, I have as well. Dr. Webner and I have had many conversations about this. He is in support of the changes to this Health and Safety Plan as we are moving in the direction that we need to. So I hope that you will allow me this evening to highlight some of the important pieces that have been brought up here. I think you'll see that, I know there's some questions about the language, but I believe that the information coming out tomorrow, it's very clearly stated that the district, as of February twenty-second, is masks optional. So that is, it's in capital letters in the information that's coming out tomorrow. So I know you're going to see different language in this presentation, but it clearly states in the parent's communication, masks optional. Okay? All right. So, it's really small. I apologize for that. So I'll just go through again and highlight some of it. We'll put it up for you. It'll be available. We definitely have added some new language to universal incorrect wear, so masks. And that is, it's stated that way because in the Health and Safety Plan document that we are given to complete by P D E, that is what it is called. That is why it's referred to as such in the plan. So the district will no longer be requiring or mandating universal masking indoors for students and staff affected February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Okay? So that is Tuesday. We have one more day. We go out for four days, we have a long weekend. Kids come back, masks are optional. Okay? We will continue right now for pre-K, at least, and we'll monitor that. They will continue to wear their masks. Pre-K, well, I'm going to explain that. Pre-K is a little bit different. One, there is no vaccine available yet. And the other thing is the structure.
Can I please just finish?
It's younger and younger and younger. Why don't we get some newborns that will walk around? Why don't we go to ten?
Excuse me. Ms. Riley, you stood state after the meeting. If you have any questions, she's worthy of sitting here with Dr. Webner and answering any questions while you're left. Please let us get through the presentation and get through the meeting. All your concerns are very, very important to us. Please, we do, we do, we're listening to every word you're saying and we're doing the best we possibly can. I promise you.
Also, with the structure of our pre-K program, those students are move about the room frequently. They're in very close contact with each other. It's a very different classroom environment than what we have in our regular programs from K to twelve. So for right now, because of that, this mask will remain. We revisit this Health and Safety Plan every month. We will monitor this. It may be that we come back next month and revise it so that it would not necessarily be a requirement for pre-K. But I need our parents to understand that we do monitor this on a regular basis and we will continue to make modifications. In myself, in consultation with the board.
Excuse me. Please hold the table. Thank you.
And our medical consultant, primarily Dr. Webner. If there is a case or there is a situation where there is an outbreak or we have a number of students who are out sick or maybe testing positive, there may be a situation where we do need to either go to virtual or there may be, and I don't want everybody to focus on this, but at one point, we may have to require masks again. But the chances of that are unlikely due to the rate of the decline in positivity and incident rate. So I know this was language that was of concern to parents. But we also, and I appreciate, I believe it was Mrs. Connolly, who made this statement, that we are looking at what is happening within our schools. And that bullet is there particularly for that reason, so that we can ensure that we don't have any type of an outbreak in a classroom or a grade left. So we're monitoring that closely. Also, Mr. Coopio did make you aware of the last bullet in there, which refers to the court and legal issues that he brought to our attention. Okay? Of course, the order for transportation does remain per Mr. Coopio. And we did remove what the definition is of a face covering. And that we are no longer using the chart to base when we mask or don't mask. That is completely gone. Okay? So again, most important, February twenty-second, masks are optional. Oh, there it is. Okay. Highlighted here, for the remainder of the year, student desks will remain three feet apart as they have been for this year. We're fully, fully in full occupancy. And then we removed a number of items here, including Pennsylvania lifted the order for physical distancing, no more hallway directional information, no lodge monitoring, no shields, and no signage. So that is all removed from the plan. No changes to cleaning and ventilation. We are using all approved cleaning products. We have increased our ventilation. We're fortunate that all of our buildings are brand-new HVAC. So we are able to run fresh air through the schools regular, all day long. And of course, we're changing our filters on a regular basis. Contact tracing, we are no longer contact tracing in the schools at all. We will be working with families where there may be a positive case of COVID within a household, because that's where we see the most transmission. So the nurses will continue to support families where that may be an issue. We have transitioned to asking parents to fill out the forms on the website if they do need a report of COVID cases or close contacts for households. That will continue. We do need to make some modifications to those forms, which will happen. And we do have a separate form, which will also come out tomorrow, that does explain the quarantine and isolation for positive cases of COVID or if you are close contact in a household.
Will you solve questions to?
We've had runny noses for a hunch of some years. You hand them a tissue, they can blow their nose.
So we already have parents that their child is sick that you wouldn't continue to keep them home from school. If you do have questions about that, to please contact the nurse. If students are feeling sick, they will again report to the nurse's office and the nurses will treat them as they have and normally do. Okay? We have a few items in there that are remaining. We will continue to do testing for parents that are interested. We do not test students unless a parent gives permission. So please, if there are, I'm not sure if that was a concern.
Oh, that's a good thing. I would actually test my parents for this. Okay? Test my kid without permission, boy. Ooh, look at that.
Please hold your comments, man.
Well, it's our opinion. We're here to express our opinions.
And as we are responsible to do, we will continue to report positive cases. I'm sorry, this is not what I mean. We will continue to report positive cases in close contact at the health department as we're required to do. The last slide, we will be revising the protocols for sports, which will reflect the Health and Safety Plan. We're going to be working on them. And again, as I stated, for parents who have questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. Dr. Webner and I will stay after the meeting. You can also speak with your building administrators and the school nurse. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Again, as Ms. Riley stated, after the meeting, if you have any questions about this, we will be here after the meeting, in the house, whatever you would like. You can state whatever you would like. Please let us just get through the meeting. And again, you know, all the decisions that you make, they're not made for you. They're made in the best interest of others.
They're not.
Yes, they are.
They're not. That's your opinion. Your opinion.
All right.
Not our best interest. It's only your opinion.
All right, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, moving on to number eleven, Mr. Evans.
Motion eleven personnel, motion at the bottom, personnel actions to approve, eleven point one, eleven point one zero on page five.
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries nine to zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion twelve point one, motion which regret that the bond retirement be approved. Patricia O'Brien, first grade teacher at Prospect Park with thirty-four years of service in the district, be approved for retirement effective April one, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? That's what Mr. Goldsboro.
Thank you. This thirty-four years is quite a long time for being dedicated to education and especially in this district. And we greatly appreciate Ms. O'Brien's dedication to our community and specifically Prospect Park community. And we want to thank her as well, although she does.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsboro. Any other comments? For myself, I would like to thank Ms. O'Brien for teaching my daughter in first grade twenty years ago. Are there any other comments? If you have one in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries nine to zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion at the bottom line is approved, thirteen point one to thirteen point five.
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries nine to zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Special Education and People's Services, motion at the bottom line is approved, fourteen point one to fourteen point five.
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries nine to zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Finance, motion at the bottom line is approved, fifteen point one and fifteen point three.
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries nine to zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
Motion sixteen, that the board of school directors approved the execution of the standard fund agreement between the Naren Architects and K C B A Architects, A I A document, P one thirty-two to twenty nineteen, in connection with the inner bar high school renovations and additions project as approved, I'm sorry, as reviewed and approved by the solicitor.
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment.
Yes, Mr. Evans.
Just as a member of the Capital Improvement Committee, I and the rest of the board, and I know the rest of the committee are looking forward with great anticipation to what I consider, my opinion, to be a transformative project for the high school facility. Pay attention to it. There's going to be some big changes at the high school level and in the way we deliver academics. So pay attention to it. It's probably the most important thing that will happen in the next three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries nine to zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
Motion seventeen, that the board of school directors approved planning contracts A and B for the inner bar high school renovations and additions project.
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries nine to zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion eighteen, is a roll call motion. The board of school directors approved the revised twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year calendar.
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, this call will be a roll call for you.
Mr. Willis? Mr. Frandler?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Naigin?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shavon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion nineteen is also a roll call motion. The board of school directors approved the preliminary for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year calendar.
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, this call will be a roll call for you, Mr. Evans.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Frandler?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Naigin?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shavon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion twenty is also a roll call motion. The board of school directors approved the revised twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Health and Safety Plan.
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment.
Mr. Goldsboro.
I just wanted to thank the board for putting in the time, asking for, and as Dr. Webner pointed out in our meeting previously, asking for the data, trying to understand the data, trying to make the best call for the district based upon the data and making changes now based upon the data. And I appreciate having that meeting yesterday. And I appreciate, and I'm honored to have worked with all of you on this. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsboro. Any other comments?
Comment, Mr. Evans. Just wanted to also echo what Mr. Goldsboro said. We were able to get to this point. We applaud the hard work of our legal team, our evidence team, our superintendent, and a collaborative board. While I do appreciate feedback from the community, and it's important in a democracy, we do look at everything. And thankfully, And thankfully, because of the data that we have been using successfully for the past two years, or as long as the pandemic has been going on, we've been able to get through these two school years, keeping our kids more in school than a lot of other colleges. And keeping our staff safe, keeping the administrative staff safe, keeping our, mine, and your children safe. I, while I don't necessarily agree on some points, one thing I will respond to is somebody insisting that we don't care. And I'm going to take off my mask for a fact.
Much better.
This is so you can see my expression.
Yeah, that's right, because I love expression.
Because why else? Why else would we be here? We don't gain anything. We don't gain any glory. We don't get money. We don't get gifts. We don't get stuff to act as school board directors. What we get is an opportunity to provide input and feedback into how our children are educated, how our community is supported, how our tax dollars are spent on major projects like the high school program, like the admin, like the athletics, like the football fields. We get an opportunity to talk about that and give our opinion or give our thoughts, as you do as well as community members. That's what we care about. I've had, you know, two, three kids go through the school system as well. They're all out now. But all of us are here because we care and care deeply. You could all be here. You could all run for office. You could run for local office. You could run for the school board. You could come to every meeting. I came to every meeting essentially now for the past 12 years. 12 years. I've been on the board now and going into my third term, but I've been coming to every meeting for 12 years because I cared about what was going on, and I cared about what was happening, and I cared about my kids and other kids. And that's what we care about. We don't care to take away your freedom. We don't care to make your children sick. God forbid, that's the last thing we want. We care to help. We care to make a difference. And we come here and show up. And like somebody just said the other day, as you guys are learning, you win by showing up. Right? So that's who wins. That's who gets to say what takes place, whether you're at a borough council meeting, whether you're at a school board meeting, wherever you are, you win by showing up and participating. But that's all we're here for. We're here because we care deeply. Like I said, we don't get anything else out of this, and I don't need to be loud and preaching. I'm just telling you for myself, I will respond when somebody tells me I don't care. Because I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Now, I wish I could speak as well as he does. Does any other, what do you have to comment there? Okay, hearing none, Ms. Goldwell, could you have a roll call please?
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Fralinger?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Sagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes. Thankfully, yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Thank you. If you could just, after the meeting, anything you had to ask, could you just wait till the end?
No, yeah, I just didn't want to go past and talk at the end.
That's not the last motion.
Okay.
Thank you so much. All right, next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 21, that the board's school directors approve the nomination for Detective Gordon Harrison to serve as a member of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors for a term commencing on July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2025.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comments, you both?
You can't say you're not taking this stuff. Yeah, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, your representative of our hour. Thank you, the school board for their support and confidence in us. Thank you, their representative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, myself, and from the board, Mr. Harris. We would like to thank you, because I know, you know, every other board that we're on is that much more tolerant than we have this, you know, helping out for this or that. Mr. Harris has been a great asset for the DCI and representing this district. And like you said, he's been on there eight years, and he's been phenomenal. And we do appreciate it, sir. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8 and 1/2 to, okay, if I have it wrong. Motion carries 9-0. Thank you. Next one, ma'am.
Motion 22, that the board's school directors approve the agreement that tractors in school districts are used until their swimming facilities and you manage $110 per hour, up to 10 hours, to be paid for distance.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 23, that the board's school directors approve a per day increase of $120 per day for the director of textile concerning the fulfillment of job responsibilities regarding the vacancy of the database administrator effective September 30, 2021, to April 2, 2022.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 24, that the board's school directors approve the revision of the bond policy to the category of pupils, 247 Hazing.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Next motion.
Motion 25, that the board's school directors approve the first readings of bond policies in the categories of programs and pupils, 146.1 Trauma Informed Approach, and 236.1 Breath Assessment.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Do we have any old business to be brought up? Hearing none, the chairman of the board, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. First and foremost, I want to congratulate Patty O'Brien for her 34 years of service to Interboro School District. I'm not sure if any of the parents here this evening had the opportunity to have their child be in Professor O'Brien's class, but she is truly an amazing teacher. She is a master educator, and she will be greatly missed here in Interboro. She has earned a happy retirement, so we do wish her well. I can't speak highly enough about her. A couple really positive things about our teachers. We have three number of teachers who are being recognized through the Franklin Federal Credit Union. Ms. Jess Vaxquez, she is our Spanish teacher at the high school. She has been selected to receive one of nine teacher grants this year. She proposed, her proposal was to bring traveling exhibit to the high school, highlighting the works of Diego Rivera, a famous painter and muralist from Mexico. So not only will our foreign language department get to experience this opportunity, but potentially our history department. So this is great that she did this, and I know that it'll be an opportunity for our students. We also had two teachers, Cindy Ross Breck, who was a 4th grade teacher at Tynecum, and Mr. R. Lecter Unit, who was our life skills teacher at the high school. They are also being recognized as 2022 Excellence in Teaching Award recipients through the Franklin Credit Union Foundation. They receive $1,000 for their classroom, but they also receive $1,000 for their school. They had over 400 applicants for these awards, and Interboro is proud to have two, three. So that's great for us and good for our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Do we have any comments from any board members? Okay, hearing none. Please visit the Interboro School District website at wwwinterborosg.org for further information. The link is listed below. On Tuesday, February 22, 2022, the Capital Improvement Committee meeting will be held virtually at 6:30 p.m. On Monday, March 7, 2022, the Finance Committee meeting with the GBO meeting immediately found will be held virtually at 7:00 p.m. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held virtually on Monday, March 14, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. The next quarterly monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held in person at the administration room Wednesday, March 16, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. Meeting is adjourned. If I seem a little harsh, I apologize. I don't need to cross that line. But I do appreciate all the comments and concerns.